Good evening. It's July 9th, Tuesday, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of County Commission meeting. And with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you could just take a moment of silence, please. Commissioner Pritchett?
To the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion for the minutes? Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
I move to continue. There are a couple of amendments that I haven't yet had a chance to forward to the clerk.
Oh.
I apologize.
On all the minutes, sir? Because I think there was four of them.
As to the most recent set of minutes.
The regular meeting, or...
Whatever the last meeting was preceding the break.
Okay, so I can make a motion to approve the April 18th, May 7, and May 21, and the zoning one's the one you want to hold on to?
Yes, ma'am, and I'll second the motion.
Okay, so you amend that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I amended a motion to approve the minutes minus the meeting from May 30th, and a second by Commissioner Loeb. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Smith?
Pardon me, we have lots of new stuff up here, courtesy of the county. We have new computers, we have new buttons, and new everything, so...
I was gonna actually explain that to everybody. We have a brand-new panel of system up here, so just bear with us. If we fumble a little bit, it's not intentional. But it's actually really great, because we were long overdue. Most of us had screens we couldn't even see on, so...
And we have HD, we have big screens, we have screens up here. And I'm glad I'm not chairman, because there's an awful lot of buttons there that I don't organize.
It's a little digital.
All right. Well, it's my honor to recognize VITAS. And I'd like to have the VITAS folks come up. Thank you for being here. Whereas VITAS Healthcare was established in 1978 as one of the nation's first hospice programs, the organization continues to be one of the leading providers in the American hospice movement, employing over 12,000 professionals. And whereas throughout the years, VITAS has cared for more than 1.6 million patients and families, expanded its services to other areas of our community, and obtained special accreditations and certifications from institutions such as the National Institute for Jewish Hospice. And whereas, the organization has earned several milestones that have paved the way for other hospice facilities throughout our community. And whereas, VITAS Healthcare continues to operate under the mission it was originally founded upon, which is to preserve the quality of life for those they treat. And whereas, Brevard County supports all organizations that unite our community during devastating times and spreads hope to those in need. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby honor and commend VITAS Healthcare for the many accomplishments and community contributions done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the seventh day of... What day is this? This says the seventh day of May, folks, sorry. July 9th. Where's my staff? Madam Chair, I recommend that we approve this motion.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And you have the floor.
Good afternoon. My name is John Harrell. Are you able to hear me?
We are now.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is John Harrell. I'm the team manager for the VITAS inpatient unit facility. My job is to oversee the day-to-day operations for the 14 rooms that we have. They're the patients and their families. I'll do my best not to be longer boring, but I wanted to share a story that took place in our unit that really changed my life and touched me and touched the entire nursing staff. This is a picture of two hands. I'll just say the patients' first names. It was Iris and Edna. It's a husband and wife that were married greater than 50 years. Both had a terminal diagnosis and both were admitted to our facility. Iris and Edna met in Germany when Edward was stationed there in the military. Iris went to a dance soon after and met Edward. He fell in love with her instantly. He married her and adopted her son as his own. They survived many ups and downs in their life, including the loss of that son. They arrived to the VITAS inpatient center together on the 17th of March 2019 and passed away four days apart from each other. Iris passed away on the 24th of March, shortly after the nurses rolled Edward into her room for them to hold hands together one last time. As Iris passed away, Edward asked her not to leave him just yet, that he had to tell her that he loved her one more time. Immediately after Iris passed away, Edward turned his head and, looking at the ceiling, kept saying over and over, "I'm here, Iris. Come get me. Take me with you, Iris." Edward left this world on the 28th of March to be reunited with the love of his life. Two of our core values are to put patients and families first and to take care of one another. Jennifer is the nurse that cared for these two patients, and I'm honored and humbled to be here today, and it's truly a blessing to be able to serve our community. Thank you for your time.
Wait.
Kathleen?
We're gonna take a picture.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith, and thank you, VITAS, for all you do. Commissioner Loeb?
I have a resolution I'll be asking that the Board approve and adopt today. David Chen, would you like to come up now? Thanks. We have David Chen, who's the Director General of the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in Miami, and then is number two in charge as well, Sarah Chen. Thank you both for being here. So whereas Taiwan is a highly-developed, thriving democracy sharing numerous cherished societal values with the United States, and whereas based upon those values, the United States has for decades enjoyed and continues enjoying an outstanding reciprocally productive and constructive relationship with Taiwan. And whereas 2019 marks the 40th anniversary of the enacting of the Taiwan Relations Act, which serves as the cornerstone of bilateral relations between the United States and Taiwan by the United States Congress. And whereas, Formosat-7 Cosmic 2 consists of a constellation of six satellites destined to monitor the ionosphere to enhance the accuracy of atmospheric weather prediction and to reduce potential damage from severe weather. And whereas, Formosat-7 is a major collaborative space program between Taiwan and the United States. And whereas, the United States and Taiwan share joint mission responsibility for program management, the data processing system, and data utilization. And whereas, data processing facilities for this mission have been constructed in both Taipei and Boulder, Colorado. And whereas, on Tuesday, the 25th of June 2019, the Formosat-7 constellation of satellites was carried into low-inclination orbit atop a Falcon-heavy SpaceX launch vehicle originating from Launch Complex 39A here at Kennedy Space Center. And whereas, Brevard County, which is home to the world's preeminent vertical launch facility, strongly encourages many years of continued partnerships between the United States and Taiwan, particularly in the space industry, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby unanimously commend and congratulate Taiwan for the successful launch of Formosat-7, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 9th day of July 2019. Move to approve?
Second. Motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any disapprove? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. I'm David Chen. My name is David Chen. I'm the representative... I am the Director General of the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in Miami, which represents the Taiwan interest in state of Florida. And the very great... This resolution is not only my personal honor, but also the honor of my government and the people, the government or people of Taiwan, the Republic of China. And as you know, that Taiwan shares the common values of freedom, democracy, and the human rights with the United States. Taiwan is the strategic, very important strategic partner of the United States in Eastern Asia. And Taiwan is also the 11th-largest trading partner of the United States and the sixth-largest exporting market of the state of Florida in Asia. And Taiwan is also the sister state of the state of Florida. So to maintain and to improve the bilateral sister state partnership between Taiwan and Florida is one of the very important missions of my office. And we look forward to continue to work with all of you to further enhance the bilateral relation between Taiwan and Brevard County in the future. Thanks. Once again, thank you very much. We appreciate your support and your friendship. Wish you all good health and happiness. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Loeb. Moving on to consent. Is any commissioners have anything they want to pull? I don't have any cards.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That consent has quite a few items, so... Okay, moving on to public comments. Bear with us with this new system, but the first public comment session will be for 30 minutes, as in our policy and as practice. So it would be the first 10 public comment cards, and then the remainder of public comments will go on to our second public comment session that we have during the meeting. So with that, I have Karen Colby. And after Karen, I have Henry Parrish. Oh, here comes Karen.
Oh, okay. So one is about a non-agenda item, and the other one is typed in about an agenda item.
Okay, so which item do you have the... Just to make sure we got the right one. Which agenda item did you want to talk about?
The non-typed one.
Okay, so that's probably in order in our other stack.
Okay, then I can go with the other one.
Yes, yes. And if the item comes up and we somehow miss it, just raise your hand and I'll remember. But go ahead, you have three minutes.
I'm here to talk about...
And if you go over, I'm just gonna warn you, because it'll beep. And that's not to be rude, it's just to remind you and try to be fair.
Understood.
Okay?
Okay.
Name and address, please.
My name is Karen Colby, and my address is Pine Tree Drive, Indian Harbor Beach. I'm here to talk about the right to free speech. I'm asking that we not lose sight of what our founding fathers wanted to do and the principles of First Amendment, which protects that said freedom of speech. According to USCourts.gov, the US Supreme Court has struggled to determine what exactly constitutes protected speech. Freedom of speech includes the right to use certain offensive words and phrases to convey political messages. This is from Cohen versus California, 403 U.S. Court 15 in 1971. According to Jason Wilson, characters may not deserve free speech, but they are entitled to it. Rights are not earned by righteousness of one's values. They're just rights. We don't have to be special to get them. We're Americans. We've earned them. Our forefathers guaranteed us these rights. I am with Kurt Smith's District 2, I need to mention that, or 4, sorry. And the right to freedom of expression is the tool that cultivated the fight to win every single right in this country's history. We would have nothing without the right to free speech. We wouldn't have women voting, we wouldn't have other people voting, we wouldn't have anything without that right to free speech to ask for it to begin with. And it means a lot to me. As an American, and you'll notice that I'm wearing an Israel pin, this was given to me by a lady that came over to see a certain event, and she was expressing unity. That's why I have a cross and an Israel pin on. We have to stick together here. It's our rights to free speech. If someone cuts it in half and says, "You can say this, but," then it's no longer the right to free speech. And I'm not talking about the obvious stuff, like being on a plane and yelling "bomb." I know I'm not supposed to get off on a tangent, but I am. I feel very strong that we can't afford to erode our rights of free speech. And now I'm gonna recite a little bit of a familiar poem. "Oh, beautiful for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountains majesties across the fruited plain. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, wrote these rights. We asked for them, we voted for them, we stand for them, regardless of who says what." And I've been insulted pretty bad in the past two months. I give them their right to say it. I also have the right to repeat things back. And so does every one of you, in my opinion, as an American. You are all Americans, you have your right of free speech. You earned it just like we did. And for the next 20 seconds, can I have a moment of silence for our veterans who worked to get us this right to free speech? Thank you.
How about I say? After Henry Parrish, we have Catherine Hames. Name and address, please.
Thank you, Chair. Henry U. Parrish III, 532 Delanoi... I'm 5... I'm sorry, 542 Delanoi, Cocoa, Florida. Came here today to... for a couple of things. I can't stay the whole meeting, so one of them I'm gonna mention, an agenda item. Number one is the boat removal that the county has supported and the TDC has supported. And I want to thank Mr. Loeb yesterday for publicly manning some removals of the boats. Back in my day when I was serving in Cocoa, one of the biggest frustrations was maritime law and local law didn't mesh, and we had a series of boats that had landed on shore, and we couldn't take them off. And we had agencies fighting each other, but it was just great to see the momentum of these boats. Normally in Cocoa, when one gets taken, or two gets taken out, there's one or two more sinking right behind it. So it's kind of a mess, and I appreciate you guys supporting that, especially the TDC paying for it. I think it was $3,500 a boat. And TDC supports and does a lot of things in our community, especially the historic side. Number two is, I'd like to talk about the Historic Commission. My family goes way back in Florida. We arrived here in 1823. We've been here 196 years, Central Florida, and we have a long history of supporting history. My mother is the founder of the Brevard County Historic Commission, and she founded it in 1963, and the county begged her to bring it in, and she did. I was too young to remember the commissioners, but she brought it in, and it's been a very big success ever since. She served on it for 45 years, and I just want to get that out there. This is... We got an agenda item that's coming up. It's, I would say, politically charged from a commissioner that's unfounded. I believe that history is as important as anything going forward, especially for people that have lived here for more than a generation. Our county has made a lot of money. I know Rita's like downtown Titusville, Cocoa, Melbourne Village, AlGali, Cocoa Beach. They're very old historic cities, and people come to Brevard County to spend money, not just here in Vera, okay? But they come all over the county, birding, they bird up there. But the history is very important, and the county's tie to history is very important to move forward. Even look at your crest up there. There's Juan Pontellion landed in Melbourne Beach, you know? And then you got the space situation. That's just starting. Our big days are ahead of us. But I appreciate for your time, and please don't kill the Historic Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, can I have a couple of minutes?
Sure.
To address the audience. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Loeb?
I appreciate your indulgence. I'll try to keep this somewhat short, but there are a couple of things I think that would be worth going over. First off, I think it's important that everyone recognize the public's right to criticize any of us, including me, including you, including whoever someone has an issue with. But I think having context is important as well. And it's important to realize that a combination of intentionally dishonest, bad actors who potentially are striving for relevancy, as well as some naive folks who have unfortunately been brought into this to believe some things without going and doing any due diligence or verifying them, have expressed some dissatisfaction with a couple of comments that I made on my personal Facebook account. And I believe that the vast majority of folks who have been upset by that have done so, or have been upset simply because the comments have been taken so far out of context that they don't resemble what was actually posted. I want to address two of those comments. I mentioned they're just a couple, so that if someone wishes to criticize, at least they'll know what they're criticizing me for, as opposed to some false narratives that have been floating around and have resulted in, among other things, a correction or two having been printed in our local newspaper. A gentleman made a post on a political social media page pointing out that anti-Trump protesters who were hoping to protest our duly-elected president while he was in Orlando, that they didn't have enough funds to travel out there to protest him. This comment, interestingly enough and conveniently enough, has been left out of essentially all of the media coverage surrounding my post, I would suggest, because real context doesn't fit a particularly malicious and political narrative. Another individual replied, the very first reply to that, in stating that anti-Trump protesters should beware of Dodge Chargers. Now, I took this to be a reference to police cars, which are oftentimes Dodge Chargers. I'd imagine with the several deputies here, we probably have some of them driving Dodge Chargers on their way here and on their way out. There's also a definite correlation between those who disapprove of our duly-elected president and those who distrust the police and would prefer that they not be around during protests. In response to that comment and the original comment referencing Dodge Chargers, the response... I'm sorry. Bear with me just a moment, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Okay, I'm sorry. So in response to that, which again addressed a 2019 anti-Trump protest, I jokingly replied that I would not recommend using a snowplow. Immediately, the folks who either were malicious, or perhaps naive, or perhaps gullible, claimed that I was endorsing a two-year-old terrorist attack in Charlottesville, which had never even been so much as mentioned in the thread. So not letting truth get in the way of a divisive partisan story, some dishonest folks and some probably well-intentioned naive folks claim that it was a Dodge Charger used in this horrendous attack from years back, and ridiculously, by extension, that my comment somehow condoned murder, which is abhorrent. Yeah, here are the facts. No one ever mentioned Charlottesville prior to my comment in that thread, no one. More importantly, the car that was used in that attack wasn't even a Dodge Charger, despite fake news claiming otherwise out of convenience. If you look at the coverage from back in the day, or even the corrections that have been run, it's very clear that's not the model of vehicle that was used. My comment referred to a much more recent, much more analogous 2019 incident which allegedly occurred in Massachusetts, in Falmouth, Massachusetts, in which there was analogous to this, a setup or a series of anti-Trump protesters where they were allegedly sprayed with slush or snow by a passing-by snowplow. It wasn't alleged that the driver intended to injure anyone, whether he intended to splash them or not, I have no idea. But my comment was intended to make a joke out of that, not out of running over or murdering people. Again, that's totally off-base. To say that the comment that I made referred to a years-old incident which is far from analogous is simply dishonest, and it's a stretch to turn something funny into something evil. Moving on to the second comment, in which I said that I might be willing to look the other way, "If an openly pro-choice, objectively racist, and sexist bigot wished to have an abortion, at least I understand how that could have been construed as objectionable." The individual referenced indicated that my comment was dehumanizing toward her, and I'm quoting, "potential children." I believe that life starts at conception, and as such, you can't dehumanize someone who doesn't exist. Now let me reiterate, the hateful bigot never wants so much as claimed to be pregnant. And here's the interesting part. Many of the more prominent members of the local political group which this individual chairs have shared commented on and liked photos dehumanizing actual, real people. There was a photo put out and liked by numerous in her group showing insects with State Representative Randy Fine's head superimposed on one insect.
Okay, all right. Unless you want us doing that while you're up here commenting, I would suggest just keep it decorum. And Mr. Loeb, if you could just wrap it up.
Sure. The point is, we have such hypocrisy and such double standards. You know, we have folks here that essentially want free speech for viewpoints that they enjoy, and they'll sit and cough and make asses of themselves when I'm trying to express my constitutionally-protected free speech. It's disgusting. It's very telling that you can't engage in an honest debate when you have to come here and do that en masse. Again, in order to promote your fake narrative, you're not going to allow your opposition or someone with whom you don't agree to come up and comment and explain what was going on. Again, that's very telling. So just real briefly here, I want to finish that item. You're welcome not to like it, and you're also welcome to leave if you don't care for it, but I have a right to speak, and I'm gonna enjoy that, just as I'm gonna enjoy allowing you to speak and spread what you'd care to spread. So the photo that was put out and liked by many folks, including some that held positions in that particular group, had a superimposed picture of State Representative Randy Fine on an insect's head, my head superimposed on another insect with the two insects engaging in a sex act. Now that's dehumanizing two actual people. I didn't hear any criticism coming from folks on that side of the aisle when that was put out, or when a pig snout was put out over my face. And I appreciate that some folks find that funny, but you know, it's very telling. It is very telling that certain individuals will pick and choose what they're offended with, or what they're offended at. So again, I'm not here to go over the hateful rhetoric of my detractors, the vast majority of whom aren't even constituents of mine, but I think that the attempt here is one, as we've just seen, one to chill free speech. They're coming here essentially to cough and choke and make noise when I'm trying to speak, to prevent me from engaging in a constitutionally-protected activity, despite the fact that I have been nothing but courteous when folks have come here and asked for their three minutes without coughing, choking, and making a fool of myself.
Catherine Hames. And then after Catherine, we have Claudia Thomas. If you could just give your name and address, please.
Thank you. Catherine Hames. I live at 844 West Whitmire in Melbourne. I'm here tonight as a resident of our county, in support of residents of our county, and to ask you as a government body to do the right thing here. When we elected you to serve us, with that vote came many expectations, expectations that exceed those expected to be displayed by the average citizen. For instance, I expect that you understand you are now an elected official, a representative of our government, a government for the people, by the people, and of the people. As a result, you will understand that you are here to serve us, your constituents. For you, that's all the citizens of Brevard. You are here to protect us when our rights as citizens of Brevard are infringed. I expect you, as an elected official, to meet those expectations by listening to us, the citizens of Brevard, even those who may not have voted for you. In other words, as a government official, seek to understand instead of simply being understood. It saddens me that many of us are here tonight because recently, when citizens of Brevard voiced their opinions, it is met with lectures, backlash, bullying, and even retaliation. How in the world have we, as a county, gotten to this, to what we're talking about here tonight? I simply don't understand it. How it is that for the... How it is that for the citizens of Brevard, exercising a constitutional right, freedom of speech, led to such repeated, ongoing, aggressive reactions from a government official and government staff, the very people who are here and who took an oath to office to serve us, not an oath to serve themselves. I expect as government officials, you have the civility to control your emotions. You are human, you have the same emotions as the rest of us, but when you were elected to serve, you display self-control. At times, your constituents will grow frustrated with you, argue with you, voice disparaging thoughts, even lies. But you, you are elected officials. As such, you lead us in becoming the best versions of ourself. In other words, you inspire us as a county to be better. It's embarrassing and incredibly disheartening that we've elected leaders who joke about hurting others, as well as seemingly attempt to shame and threaten members of our community. I expect you also to select staff members who consistently excel at serving us in words and actions. They too are government employees, and they serve as your voice. Demand that they also lead by example with vision and integrity. Please do not sit in silence and turn a blind eye to what is happening in our county. Step up. Doing the right thing is hard, but by placing your name on the ballot to serve in a government role, you are saying you are here for us and to do the right thing every minute of every day while in office. So I'm here tonight to ask you to lead with integrity and grit. What is happening in our county is and will continue to have devastating effects on us. Turn the current-
Okay, ma'am, you have to, your time's up. Okay, Claudia Thomas. And after Claudia Thomas, Janice Stout. If you could just give your name and address, please.
Claudia Thomas, District 1, Precinct 104. You have my address on the comment card. My name is Claudia Thomas, and I am from Memson. To some of you, that might sound familiar. Yes, it was me who posted the now infamous screenshot that Commissioner Loeb referenced when he tagged Lockheed Martin, my employer for almost 30 years, and for whom I currently work as a contractor. The same tag triggered subsequent calls between Commissioner Loeb and Lockheed, and between Lockheed and said contractor. A few facts are now necessary since the March meeting, when Commissioner Loeb did his best to browbeat my friend Stacy Patel. Yes, I did work for Lockheed Martin, and with a stellar record that Lockheed Martin's Government Affairs Director would have discovered had he continued with his unwarranted searches. And while I retired a few years ago, they asked me to come back last year in a contract position, one that has been extended not once but twice. I resent Commissioner Loeb's thinly veiled attempt to deflect from the real issue by insinuating that I was a liar on public record. On the day of the picture I posted, I was attending a Habitat event honoring women veterans. I have been a member of the Women Build Team for almost eight years now, a project near and dear to my heart. I was looking forward to this particular event because my friend Mel Martin was being recognized. I cannot say enough about this woman, a brilliant and ethical person, whose behavior I try and obviously sometimes fail to emulate. What I didn't expect that day, and wasn't emotionally prepared for, was to see not only her opponent, but also the opponent of someone else I canvassed for, Vicky Mitchner, another woman veteran. It just felt wrong that the people who fight for the least among us had to share this day with two people who hold such opposing beliefs. I've tried since those elections to bottle up my sadness, and yes, at times anger, that some voters in the place I've called home for 40 years make some of the choices they do, and on this day, I think it just came to a head. To Commissioner Loeb, it hurt me having to take that call from my employer. I strongly believe you had no right to retaliate against me by contacting Lockheed in an attempt to threaten my employment. This caused me some distress while I worried that my position might have been in jeopardy. Luckily, however, my employer called and told me that they understand the difference between free speech of a personal nature and that which impacts the company. They did in fact tell me that I could put my post back up if I so desired. What worries me, however, is that what might have happened had you directed this at someone whose employer is less likely or more likely to be intimidated. To the other commissioners, I'm asking for your help. What Commissioner Loeb did to me, along with his boycott of events like Civility Brevard, his comments on the dais, and his horrific comments about Stacy, show that he has no intention of discontinuing his behavior that is reprehensible and inappropriate for a government official. I believe you have good hearts, and I ask you to spare our county further embarrassment and potential lawsuits by asking him to resign from any position of trust or county representation that he may have. Thank you.
Do you want to speak now? I'll just say, keep it limited, or we can do it at the end. Okay?
That was interesting, albeit totally devoid of context. So let's address what I actually have.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair, this is out of order. This is public comment period.
Right now, I have a little bit to respond.
You have your own void report at the end. You can respond then. This is taking up the public's comment period. We don't need to hear-
My pleasure. The public is allowed, commissioners can respond in fairness. I don't see why we change it with this call.
Okay, and I think that that's the fine line. I mean, do we allow the commissioner who's being addressed respond, or do we wait till the end? Maybe that's the compromise. We wait till the end of public comment, and then anybody that wants to respond to anything.
Well, that would be fine, too, because otherwise, we're just going to keep going back and forth.
Well, again, and I totally get it. I totally get it. I want order to remain as well, but at the same time, if it was anybody attacking you or Ms. Pritchett or Frank, I mean, I would want them to have a chance to respond, you know, in fairness. So can we do this at the end of public comment?
If there's a specific accusation, I think it loses the effect if it's untimely.
But I think we have to, excuse me, I think we have to maintain order, and I think that-
I understand.
So let's see, and if she doesn't mind. Okay, very brief, please.
Very brief. The short answer is, I was told point-blank if I wasn't there, that the check, which was a six-digit check going to Habitat, might not have been cast, and I have that in writing. So anyone that wants to do a 119 request, go ahead. So don't call me a hypocrite and don't use vulgarity when you're saying I'm there to ensure that you get your money. Thank you.
Okay. And from now on, any comments from commission or anything, responses that we have will be at the end of public comment, not during, to try to move things along. We just hadn't set the rules, so it's not fair to me to implement them now because someone doesn't like what's being said. So Janice, and after Janice Stout, we have Henry Wyler. Oh, John Henry Wyler, I apologize.
Hi, hello, everyone. It's my first time speaking in front of the commission, so thank you.
Name and address, please.
1372-
Let me interrupt you one second. Ms. Bentley, is name and city acceptable, or do they have to provide their address? I just want to make sure we're-
Name and city would be acceptable.
Okay.
Janice Crisp Stout, and I'm from Palm Bay. Mr. Loeb is not my commissioner, but thank you, Mr. Tobia, for doing an excellent job representing us. I've worked with Mr. Loeb, he's a friend, in the Republican Party, and I just want to say really quick, thank you for the hundreds of millions of dollars you've saved us. That's what I would like people to hear, because he has worked with the whole commission to actually do a lot of great things for the county, working for the lagoon to save taxpayers' money. But I do want to, I had some things I wanted to say, but I do want to address some things that were said that are very offensive. Somebody said, "How did we get here to this offensive place where we're at?" Well, how did we get here? Talking about all these words, and this offends me, that offends me. Well, how did we get here? We got here by women walking on the streets of Washington DC in vagina costumes, and suddenly you're offended because somebody says, "Go ahead, have your right to an abortion." Well, guess what? Go ahead and have your right to an abortion, Stacy Patel, because you have walked on the streets of the O'Gally Causeway, holding up a sign that says, "My uterus, my body, my choice." Now, when somebody says it to you, you're offended. Pick a lane, Stacy Patel. You cannot be offended.
Okay, try to keep your comments to the commission, if you can.
I am talking directly to you, but that is, and when she calls somebody-
Yeah, we don't want to get personal, so please, it's okay.
When she calls somebody a racist, when she doesn't even have the correct story, and then says on her feed, "In no way should the Democratic ticket be two white men," now back to regular scheduling, everybody, that is a racist statement, and she cannot even admit to it. It is there, it has been screenshotted, it is all over Facebook, and she will deny it. However, she has unleashed an attack like no other on Brian Loeb. She has had people call his home and threaten to rape his wife, and I am deeply offended. I am deeply offended as a woman, that she is a woman-
Okay, be careful, because-
I heard it, I've seen it. I have got the threats myself that they know-
You can talk about the comments made, but you can't accuse other people of making those comments, because that crosses the line.
Okay, let's talk about the comments made to me personally, from her friends, that said she told them to do it, that said she told them to say, "I know all about you, they've looked up my personal record, they know where I live." So that's a threat, that's a doxing. That is what's coming from that side, all because they don't like his positions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, after John Wyler, Ruth Ganter. Okay. From now, and from now on, if you have anything for us, if you could just give it to the clerk or to the, yeah, that's okay. Just trying to be consistent.
Yep, no problem. One February Commissioner.
Thank you.
Well-
Name and address, or name and city?
Yeah, John Wyler, Tropical Trail, Merritt Island, Florida. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to speak in support of Commissioner Loeb due to all the negative comments that have been made. For the first time in over 12 years, District 2 finally has a commissioner who's keeping his campaign promises to restrict the expansion of government at the local level, bring expenditures under control, and assure that we're using county funds to maintain and upgrade infrastructure that is under the county commission's jurisdiction. During your campaign, Commissioner, you promised that you would get the potholed sections of South Courtney in front of Justin Jr. High repaired. It has been resurfaced along with 25 other residential streets. You promised to get the Kewanas Island boat ramp replaced after its destruction during Irma, along with the boat ramp on 520 across from the hospital. Both have been done. You promised to focus on cleaning up the lagoon and have worked tirelessly to ensure IRL funds are focused on the things that would give us the most bang for the buck in an expedited fashion. You promised to evaluate the TDC's expenditure of funds and get effective use of these tax funds. You're again making a difference. All of this has been accomplished in your first six months in office. So Commissioner Loeb, you're doing the things that most of us voted for you to do, and I encourage you to maintain your focused effort. There are partisan forces that are attacking you daily for your counterattacks on social media. They are the same forces that have attacked our president and have designated many of us as deplorables. They have only recently declared that two white men cannot be allowed to be president and vice president on their own ticket. How partisan and discriminatory can you get? In any event, I believe you have the right to freely speak your mind about issues and respond in kind to personal attacks. Please continue your focused efforts to get fiscal reforms and infrastructure projects to improve our waste management system in Brevard County. Thank you for your willingness to serve and put your personal legal career on hold as you accomplish these tasks for all of us. And I've watched you, Commissioner Loeb, for four months before the primary campaign, when you first decided to run, and I've known you to be a man of integrity, a man of your word, a man that says, does what he says he's going to do. And I have no objection to you as an individual away from the commission responding to attacks on social media. And most of the things that have occurred is because you were first attacked. So thank you very much for your service, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wyler. Ruth Ganter, and after Ruth, and I believe it's Ganter, is that correct? Okay.
Hello, I'm Ruth Ganter. I live on Merritt Island, and you've turned my house into a retention pond, which I'm not happy with. They put the road in a number of years ago, you may remember, they put my house below the crown of the road. The infrastructure on Merritt Island is so bad, I don't even know how it exists. But when it rains, and it doesn't have to rain that much, it comes into my house, all the water floods from Sixth Avenue into my yard, all the garbage from the neighborhood comes in my thing, and then the sewer system turns, and it backs up in my yard. What I want is relief. We called the county, they always say they don't know what to do. I don't know. I mean, we've got somebody in there who must know how to get rid of water. But we even asked, we said, "Okay, we want to live in the house. We've been there 57 years. At this point in my life, I don't want to move." I mean, I'm not even capable of it. We even asked if we could have sandbags that we could, I mean, that's ridiculous, but at least we could get some of the water. They said, "Oh, they can't do that." Well, what are you going to do? I have complained to everybody, but this is, you could surfboard in the front of my yard when it rains. That's, and then I have a lake, so I, you know, you're not supposed to put road water in a fresh lake. That's a no-no. Well, you're using it for a detention, retention pond, so it has a cattail. So I said, "Maybe you could take," I mean, it's against the law, but you're breaking it anyhow, "get rid of the cattails and maybe have a little more space for water." This is no way to live. Every time it rains, you get so apprehensive that you are going to be underwater. I mean, the other day it rained, I don't know, 10 minutes, it was already four, maybe five feet into the garage. I mean, people come by and they make these giant fishtails, you know, where they make them go through the water. Well, that just makes waves into the house. Well, then they gave me a sign, you know, right, no wake zone. You know how good that is? That's like talking to the wallpaper. Nobody follows. Signs are just a suggestion, they're not a fact. So this is where we are. But I want some relief. I need it. And it's getting worse. My son went out today and looked in the drains, full of plastic. Hello, don't they clean those out? But even that won't help. You need to do some infrastructure work. I laugh when you put palm trees on 520. It's lipstick on a pig because you're decorating crap. I mean, there is no sense to the whole thing. We need to get to our, the plant has to be able to pump sewage. That's not right that I have sewage in my yard. I mean, hello. You got something to say?
Yes, ma'am. I was going to say, it sounds like you've got a couple of different issues up there. My office is just on Courtney. If you want to come in, I'll get you to come in sometime this week if it works for you, or next week if that's better.
Whenever you make the day, I'll be there.
What I'll do is I'll ask, I don't know, John, would it be better to have you, or maybe someone from the department come in to address some of those issues as well?
Probably have some representatives of Public Works there, Roden Bridge, and myself.
You know, that used to be a country road when I bought the house. Now it is the New Jersey turnpike. Some days, I can't even get out.
Well, here's what I'll tell you. I'm happy to meet with you. I've just got to get a better grasp as to what's going on there. Our Assistant County Manager, Mr. Danningoff, will meet with you as well.
Because I've called and called, and now they say, "Well..."
Well, we'll definitely get you an answer.
We put a camera down, yeah, that helps.
Okay, well-
We'll definitely get you an answer.
Take pictures of it.
But I'll, actually, if you want to come up, I'll give you a card.
So we need to spend our money on infrastructure, not junk.
If you just want to come up, I can give you a card.
So, okay, well, thank you. I'd be glad for the help.
I'll get you in. If you can come in this week, I'll do everything I can to get you in this week.
Okay, Mr. Reverend J.B. Dennis, and after the Reverend Amelia Sullivan.
Good evening, everyone. Reverend J.B. Dennis, 3710 Catalina Drive, U.S. Navy Combat Veteran Retired. When voters and taxpayers allow unlawful acts to go unpunished, we are moving towards a county government of men and women rather than a governmental law. For years now, West Cocoa, District 1, has been a victim of systemic racism and dereliction of duty. The voter commissioners have a duty to ensure that a 99% black community has the right to enjoy the property, which is guaranteed by the 14th Amendment that I fought for. Even if it is a Democratic community, we pay taxes there. Dereliction of duty is defined under Local Government Code, Chapter 87, Removal of a County Commissioner. This chapter clearly states that a commissioner can be removed from office by a U.S. District Judge for the following encompasses: Gross ignorance of office duty, of official duties, intentional unlawful behavior related to your duties, intentional or corrupt, failure, refusal, or plain neglect to perform your duties as an elected official. Mrs. Rita Pritchett was elected to serve District 1, located in District 1 as a training range owned by the county, and you are responsible for your tenure. No efforts have been made by Ms. Pritchett to build stalls, close the range in, build a sidewalk, build a drag wall, and plant grass on it. Self-requests have been made prior to me, and probably going to be- Self-requests have been made prior to me and probably gonna be after me, asking her to do something. We have got no cooperation in our black community since Ms. Pritchett's been in office. Since she has been elected, our 14th Amendment right to the enjoyment of our property has been constantly violated. So Ms. Pritchett, I'm asking you in front of witnesses, I want you to give me a response in 30 days on what you're gonna do. As you already know, the last time I filed one of these for removal of you, we had a financial problem, we don't now.
It's really hard not to comment back sometimes when people say things that are just egregiously untrue. Amelia Sullivan?
Yes. Amelia Sullivan, South Patrick Shores.
Great. Whoops. Go ahead.
My name is Amelia Sullivan, and I am 12. My house is on a military dump. We have the biggest yard in the neighborhood, and that basically means everyone in the neighborhood or all the children come to my house to play. We play hide-and-seek, climb trees, make forts, good stuff. But now I can't do that anymore because there's a dump on my yard, and I'm not even allowed out in the yard anymore. Like, all I do in the morning is just sit out on the patio and take my dog out, that's Now no one's allowed over, and now I'm alone again. And you can now understand how that makes me feel, it's not very good. So that's why I was reaching out to you guys, see if you can help.
Okay, the remaining of public comment, because we had 10 cards, we'll go into the next slot of public comment as per policy. Item H1.
Good evening Commissioners. Item H1 is a petition to vacate 10 feet of a 20-foot wide public utility and drainage easement along the rear lot line of Lot 7, Block 316 of the Port St. John, Unit 8 subdivision. And this will allow the owners to construct a pool outside of the remaining easement. Notices have been sent to county agencies and public utility companies, and we received no objections.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Lowber. Any further discussion? CNN on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H2.
Item H2 is another petition to vacate 15 feet of a 20-foot wide public utility and drainage easement along the rear lot line of Lot 20, Block 279 of the Port St. John, Unit 8 subdivision. This will allow the owners to construct a pool outside of the remaining easement. We've sent out notices and received no objections.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Lowber. Any further discussion? CNN on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. H3.
H3 is a petition to vacate three public utility and drainage easements within Lot 32, Block 128 of the Port St. John, Unit 4 subdivision. This will remove existing sheds as encroachment into these easements. These are rear and side lot easements. Notices have been sent to county agencies and public utility companies, and we've received no objections.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Lowber. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H4.
Item H4 is a petition to vacate part of a 50-foot wide unopened public right-of-way along Lots 15, 16, and 17 of Block 52 of the Sun Valley subdivision in Titusville. This will allow the owners additional area for the construction of a single-family residence. Notices were sent out to county agencies and utility companies, and we've received no objections.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Lowber. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H5.
H5 is a petition to vacate a portion of an existing five-foot wide sidewalk easement on Grove Street along Lot 1, Block C of the Merritt Park Place subdivision. And this will remove a portion of the site's building as an encroachment into this easement that's along Grove Street. The existing sidewalk is actually in the right-of-way, not in the easement. Notices have been sent out to agencies and public utility companies, and we've received no objections. Staff has no concerns with this request.
No problem.
Motion by Commissioner Lowber.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H6. Mr. Golding?
Is this one where there is no vote needed to find a new plan? Correct, correct. This is a required public hearing for our HUD funds, Home and CBG. Every year we're required to do an annual action plan. As part of that, we partner as the... With four major cities in the county, Palm Bay, Melbourne, Cocoa, and Titusville, everyone who receives federal funding, we act as lead agency for the housing, the home side. So we submit one consolidated action plan, which reviews what we've done the previous year and sets up the priorities for the coming year. We are required to hold this public hearing, we also are receiving public comments at the time, and then we will do a second public hearing on the 23rd of July. And so, at this point, it's just that if there are any public comments to allow for them, they get rolled into the report, they get submitted up to HUD.
Sounds great. There's no action that needs to be taken.
Commissioners.
I'll turn your mic on.
Okay. Commissioners, we have item I, 1. I, 1 is the U.S. 192 direction, we're asking for a direction to the Board regarding the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer Environmental Resource Permit as directed by the Board in May, in May or April. They directed us to come back to the Board on today with the updates of the different options that we had at that time, and we looked at updating all the information. You have it in front of you in the reports and so forth. What we're looking at right now is, I don't know if you want me to go through the detail in the report.
I think we can all read. I mean, and I don't know if anybody wants to speak on this, I mean, if the Commission's okay with it, I'd like to speak first, since this is in my district. Obviously, for anybody that's not following, this is about starting a new landfill on 192, and I've been adamantly opposed to it. I think that we have better options, and I know that this Commission, or at least the intention of this Commission, was to revisit this item after the break, after we would have a chance to look at the appraisal for that property for American Recyclers at the possibility of purchasing that property to extend the life of our Sarno facility, and also, and it's in our report about, you know, using the existing, some of the existing property that's there, about extending the life. In other words, we were looking for other options, because any way you slice it, putting another landfill out at 192 at the entrance to our county is a bad idea. Not just environmentally, I mean, I don't care what this report says about mitigation of wetlands. Our staff has told us in the past that you cannot recreate a natural wetland anyway, so that argument's gone. But never mind, also missing from this report is the impact on property values around. You know, this is out of Deseret Ranch. Do you want to see this when you drive into our county? Do you want to tell people, "Welcome to Brevard County, oh, I live off of 192," after you pass our landfill? I think we, as a government and as a responsible stewards of the environment and responsible Commissioners, should do everything within our power to prevent another footprint of a landfill, no matter how dire it looks. And right now, where we stand, and this is like the very layman's version of this very long report and the series of events, is we've asked the city of Melbourne for a height variance at our existing Sarno landfill, which is well within reason, and so far, I know it's cleared the planning and zoning by, I think there was one dissenting vote, and that would extend us and give us a little more time.
Unanimous.
Yeah, oh, it was unanimous. Yeah, I didn't have a chance to watch the meeting, I just got it reported back to me. Again, I think, I think the proper thing, again, would be to do everything we could to not do this, because there's no part of this that is a good scenario, at least in my opinion, and I know, at least at the time, the Board was all open and willing to look at other options. Because, you know, we can talk about the hurdles, but I think it's important to say, what can we do to not do this? Because there is no part of this that's a good idea, at least in my opinion. We've sued the Deseret Ranch folks, or I should say, they've sued us because we quicktook their land over 30 years ago because the Sarno landfill was dire in filling them, and so far, we've made it this far. So I think any steps that we take, and this is just the signing of the permit, because this has been moving along unbeknownst to many people, and not because the county's done any efforts or made any efforts to hide it, but it's just been going for so long that I think it's, people don't get excited about it as much anymore because, "Oh, they're talking about the landfill again," and sometimes we get preoccupied with other things. So again, I will not support this, I don't think it would be wise of us to do that without all of the information. We asked for this report, and staff did exactly what we asked them to do, however, we don't have all of the information. We don't have the appraisal for that property, and I didn't see anywhere in this report, and I could have missed it. We don't have the potential value of that property if we were to put this, the property that we took from Deseret, if we were to put that out to RFP to sell in the future. We don't have, that's not factored in this at all either. So that would mitigate a lot of these costs that, you know, to do, to make this landfill be able to handle more and to do a lot of other things. So, again, I think it's a bad idea, and I think that this is not a legacy I don't, I mean, I don't want to own. I mean, obviously, politically, it's not gonna affect me because this won't be, this will be long gone probably before this place ever opens. But I think as responsible stewards of our government and as responsible people, I think, you know, anything we can do to prevent another landfill is a good thing, and I think we need to do everything within our power and look at every other option. Because that's one thing we haven't done, and a lot of people haven't done in the past, is they said, you know, "What if this option wasn't there?" What if, instead of saying, you know, "This is why this is a better idea," we've always considered it as an option, and we should be looking at this as not an option. So, it's just, again, I try not to rant about this, but I get very angry and I get a bit all over the place, but it's very frustrating to me that we're not doing more to prevent this. Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you. County Manager, let me ask you a question. Is this permit that we're trying to get, is there an expiration on it?
There is no expiration that the Army Corps has given us. We have not signed the permit yet. Once, there is, the, we have a certain period of time, I believe it's actually, was it 10 years that we have to have construction underway from the time...
The permit's good for 10 years from the time that they issued it.
Okay, so we have 10 years on the permit before we have to take action, correct?
We have to have construction underway within 10 years. We have not yet, we did not sign the permit because of the Board action that was taken in April.
Well, let me ask you this, we have a thing to sign a permit, how long do we have to have to sign the permit before this whole thing would expire? How long do we have to make decisions?
The timeframe for us to object to the permit as it was issued has passed, so really, for us to move forward, it's just when we sign the permit, and then the county would be in a position to take the next steps. There are various phases that were included in the report about what those steps would be, including additional permits that would need to be obtained, that would be to FDEP and FAA, and then after that, we would get into the right of, the turning lanes, that would have to be the first phase that we would have to take action on, followed by wetland mitigation. And that all would have to be completed before you could even consider moving forward with any kind of construction at the site.
County Manager, I was talking to you yesterday, and the plan that we have moving forward on Sarno Road, can you explain that? Because you told me it adds up to six to seven years on that site.
Right now, the latest estimate that we had obtained from the consultants was, without the additional height variance being granted by Melbourne, it was a little over, approximately a year, a little over a year, and that was due to the hurricane, all the debris that was added to the facility. If, in fact, we obtained that consistent with what's happened at the Planning and Zoning Board, that would add another approximately three years, so you would have four years there. There's also additional property that we have in an area that's being used by Find, their lease ends this year, that can potentially add, although it's a significant cost to do it, but we could actually add another four years by making modifications to that part of the site. So those are the first two areas, and then there is the Florida Recyclers site, which is adjacent to it, which has a potential to add anywhere from eight to 20 years, you know, depending on what is done there and what the cost would be, whether or not it would be prohibitive. We've tried to give the Board as much information as we have, but as Commissioner, the Chair has indicated, we do not have the information yet that has enabled us, although they've been trying to get it. I think it started in March. We are, we don't yet have the information. I think we're supposed to get the additional information that's needed, the appraiser, sometime in mid-July.
Okay, so I think we're making some progress. We've sent them forward, and they're coming back with some ideas, so I think our plan's working. My goal would be that we were able to move ahead with the Sarno Road, so we're not starting a new footprint for this. And then, also my goal would be, and we've talked about this at many meetings, to start getting more aggressive in some of the recycling efforts. I think a lot of this is construction and even some landscaping things that are filling up most of these dumps. So we're gonna have to, soon, as a nation, get better with taking care of our waste. So I'm on board with this. Commissioners, my goal would be, is that we continue to own the property and let Desiree use it forever and ever, amen. You know, that would be a wonderful thing, it's going well now, we've paid a whole lot of money to it right now, so I don't know if people would be able to come up with the cost to repurchase it, but as long as it's the county's, I would like for them to go ahead and make it, you know, take care of our property. So that's, this is my goal, that we go ahead and move forward with the Sarno Road idea, I'm hoping that happens. Worst-case scenario, if we gotta come back in a crisis, we'll have to have another conversation. But I really appreciate us starting to come up with some alternatives so that we're able to not increase the footprint and stay on the sites that we have already, so.
I appreciate that, and if you'd just entertain me for a second, Commissioner I think this item, they want us to sign the permit, and my fear is if we say yes, and there's no harm in waiting, it's not gonna make a hill of beans a difference if we wait for the information from the appraisal, and we wait and look at our entire option, like, you know, is American Recyclers gonna work? And I did notice, we have a card, and I apologize, and before we even make a motion or take a vote, I'd like to hear from this person. My fear is, is that we sign the permit, and then we very discreetly start doing things, and then it's almost the point of no return, and waiting another month is not gonna be, or even two, if it takes that long to get the appraisal, but I think we need all of that information before we jump the gun.
I'm fine with that, with the questions also, but even if we do this, and let's say we do it down the road, say whatever happens, I'm okay with the driveway, the mitigation, I'm not gonna vote to turn that into a facility. I think we need to work on other things. But just so you know, I think we need to continue to own it, let Desiree use it to farm on.
Right.
Until, you know, something happens with what do we do down the road, but I think we're starting to make some progress, and I'm really thankful that the staff's starting to get aggressive with this, so.
Awesome. Commissioner Lowber, did you want to talk before I let the card? I just missed the card.
Just real briefly, I'm not gonna push your vote or anything at this point, but, no, I just wanted to mention that I was there for the P&amp;Z meeting this past Friday in the evening. evening with Yuri, with the number two in his department, Mr. Mulligan, I believe was his name, and then Abby was there as well, who did an exceptional job, I'll give her a shout-out, in pitching our case to the folks on Melbourne's P&amp;Z. I believe that something that's likely to go through, just based on everything that I've done in terms of due diligence and recon with some of the folks down there. I will tell you, though, that one of the things that I think may help to emphasize in order to increase our likelihood of that going through, is that this isn't, this request is not asking to increase the height for that particular property over the highest portion of that property now anyway. A lot of people keep referring to this as a height increase, and yes, technically, you can say it is a height increase, but really, we're asking to cap out at 81 feet, which is where it's already set to cap out anyway for the bulk of the landfill. This is a small swath of the landfill at one extreme corner, so whatever harm would be done by having an 81-foot landfill is going to be done anyway over there. So there's really no additional harm that I see taking place to anyone. I think that was a point of contention with a lot of folks. They also heard, I believe, 104 feet was a magic number that came up at one point. And my understanding, and I may be misinformed or incorrect about it, was it's 104 feet above sea level, but 81 feet above the base elevation for that facility. See, Yuri's nodding, or John's nodding as well, so I'll go with that. But I just think, any conversations anyone chooses to have with anyone that's got a position of influence with Melbourne, I think that's a point that may be worth focusing upon.
Commissioner Tobia?
Can we listen to the card first, Madam Chair?
Okay. Hugh Evans? Sorry, I missed you before we started gabbing up here.
Hugh Evans, Florida Recyclers. We were asked by the county to provide some documents, including surveys, so we can kind of determine what we have left there at Florida Recycles. That survey was completed this week. We'll be giving the county a copy of that. They asked for some financial information, which will be completed within the next 10 days and turned over, so that should be right on target with the August date that is in this report. So I think everything's moving ahead. It's a complicated issue. I realize there's a lot of moving parts. We're trying to do our part to provide the county the information that they need. Be glad to answer any questions.
I say, how long do you think before, I mean, like, what's your deadline? I mean, before your absolute-
We'll have the accounting information completed probably this week. We'll review it, get it to the county Monday or Tuesday, following week, and then the survey's done now, so we get them a copy that was done yesterday. So, and that gives us about, at the 40-foot height level, about a million cubic yards of remaining space. We also recycle about 50% of the material that comes into the landfill. So we have used, in this case, something like 50,000 cubic yards on an annual basis in there, even though we have much more waste that comes in, so.
Does anybody have any questions? For him? Okay.
Thank you.
And in case anybody was wondering, the American Recyclers is a property that's adjacent, basically, to the landfill, and it's already zoned landfill. So that would not only save a ton of money and time, it takes years to get a landfill permit, and that's already sort of what they're doing over there now, so. Commissioner Tobia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this goes to staff. I think I've got a couple lines of questioning, first on Florida Recyclers, and then on the 192 site. Is it correct to say that the appraiser cannot confidentially, or, sorry, not confidently do an appraisal without more data than what the county has received?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding, that I was informed by the appraisal.
And whose responsibility is it to provide that data?
Florida Recyclers.
When did the county ask for this data to be provided?
It was first requested in May, in which we were told it would take about two or three weeks. And in June, the appraiser again requested it, and he was told two to three weeks.
So it's my understanding, they're months over their initial estimate, and I understand that you had a reason for this failure on the Florida Recycles. What excuse did they provide?
I understand that they were concerned about the confidentiality of the financial information.
Thank you. And I'm going to bounce this one over to our county attorney. Would proprietary financial information given to the appraiser become public record?
It can be protected. The appraisal-
Is also protected for a period of time?
So it seems is that excuse is just that, an excuse. And because of that, have they made additional promises? It seems like they made additional promises up here. Are you confident that, having failed twice, that they will follow through this third time?
I can't answer that with any confidence level. It's totally out of my hand.
Thank you. I'd like to ask you a couple of questions on the 192 site. By signing this permit, would we, as a county, lose any options?
No, sir.
What is the cost if we were to move forward and sign this permit currently?
At this point in time, the only cost is signing the permit, unless the board tells me to pursue other permitting. As far as the other permitting are concerned, the FDOT permit and the FAA permit, we're looking at probably around $60,000. And then the local permitting, which I don't have an idea yet.
Okay, for that 60-plus thousand dollars, what is the estimated value gained to taxpayers if we did sign that permit? What would be the return on the investment for that 60,000?
If you sell the property as a landfill, which is what it would be permitted as, it would be upward of 12 million additional value.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. If we sign a permit that will cost us $60,000, taxpayers could potentially see a revenue increase of 12 million dollars? Did I hear that correctly? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. You're looking at our permitting efforts that have been occurring for the last 13 years, and the millions of dollars that we poured into this permitting process, that has a value, and the value is in the millions of dollars. And time is money, as well as the actual money that you paid consultants to do it.
So, and should we go forward with this permit with $60,000 and get a $12 million return on the investment? Would it then require a dump to be put on that space, or just change the potential highest and best use on that space?
It would change the highest and best use, which would be a landfill.
But it would not guarantee that a landfill would go there. It would just provide a great return on investment for the 24-plus million dollars that county taxpayers-
Yes, sir, because at the end of the day, the board is the one that controls the zoning on that property. It would have to be rezoned from what it currently is. It's governmental-managed land industrial. So if we were to sell that property, we would have to, it would have to be rezoned to something else.
So, and then, final question, and I don't mean this to be a policy question, but why would, what would the logic behind not signing a permit at the cost of $60,000 if taxpayers were going to receive a potential benefit of $12 million? I'm trying to find the logic behind not signing it. Am I missing something? I read your report, I thought it was pretty telling, but I don't know if I wasn't reading between the lines.
You're looking at it from an economic perspective, or from a policy perspective?
I'm looking at it from an economic perspective, as I tackle all issues here.
The economic perspective is that there is no downside to it, as long as there's nothing built on it.
Which-
The board has the option of stopping it at any given time. For example, we can receive instructions not to proceed at all. From this point, we can receive instructions to get our permits and not to build anything, or we can receive instructions to put in the turning lane, and at that time, stop. The board is the one that determines that, according to the instructions that we got, and we were going by the last instructions that we got in 2016.
Thank you. Yuri, and thank you, Eden. I think what we have here is, we have a seller that is not willing to provide information. They're providing us with a used car, but not giving us any of the maintenance records. And I'm pretty skeptical when it comes to this. I don't know if there's any mitigation factors. I don't know. I saw an appraisal that they assumed that this was worth $8 million, but we don't have any way to calculate that. The only calculation that we're provided with as a board up here is to move forward with potential $60,000 permit that could see a windfall of $12 million. And I don't want to say a windfall, because we're not making money, we would just not be losing the potential of $12 million. So as we move forward, I have no problem with continuing negotiations with Florida Recyclers, but the reality, if we don't move forward, we boxed ourselves into one position. We're saying we're not willing to go in another direction, so whatever you hand us, Florida Recyclers, we will take. And I don't think that puts us in a very strong bargaining position. I think for the $60,000, it gives us another option, as you've said. So I have no problem with allowing Florida Recyclers more information, but I believe we asked for five years, and I think they only wanted to turn over two and a half, and their excuses were weak at best. So I will be supporting, strongly supporting, the signing of the 192 site permit, and it's fine to continue negotiations, if you want to call that, with Florida Recyclers. But to sit here and twiddle our thumbs, as they do not provide us with any information, I think is doing a disservice to our taxpayers. No one wants an additional dump, but the reality of the situation is, and no one wants to eminent domain land, this was done 30 years ago, half of, as this board knows, we eminent domained quite a bit of land when it came to the Parkway out there. This is a function of government. I don't like how this stuff is done, but to pick and choose seems ridiculous. I cannot come up with a reason for us not to move forward, at least with the permit. So we have the ability to move forward. As you've mentioned, there are a few years here that leeway, but if I ask you to, Yuri, if I ask you to start on the 192 as a facility, how many years would it take, if we signed the permit today, to get up and running?
You're looking at six, around six months of a local permitting process. You're also looking at around maybe the DOT permit, I would say at least three months of that, in order to get that. The FAA would be relatively quick, because we've already gotten that permit one time. So all the documents are prepared.
Before we could use it as a facility, from today, if you got the approval, how long, how many-
You're looking at around three years.
So in other words, the four years that you're-
About three years.
Okay. The four years that you're estimating that we have as a potential, if Melbourne gave us whatever, all that variance and stuff, really isn't four years? Because it would take us three years from today to even start using that as a facility. Is that, otherwise, we have to use, you know, a private landfill that would cost taxpayers more money? Is that-
That's correct, and that's assuming that construction goes relatively smoothly.
Very, so it-
Relatively.
Relatively smoothly. Okay. I appreciate your time. I will be supporting, moving forward, not with the facility, but at least with the permitting of the facility, as well as to, I might as well give Florida Recycles the opportunity, the third opportunity, but to believe that they would come forward with any information that they haven't done, I think would be foolish.
Commissioner Smith, you're next, but I wanted to, just because, in relation to what that series of questioning and posturing display was, if we waited to sign this permit another 30 to 60 days, would that change the potential value of that property, even if it was permitted as a landfill?
No, ma'am, the time period that you're saying is too short.
Right. Next question. As far as, you know, going out to RFP, none of that would change if it was 30 or 60 days from now? I mean, as far as if we did sign the permit at a later time, it's not going to change the dynamic of what that property would be worth in the future, correct? And if you were, hypothetically, if you were somebody that was going to purchase that property, and it was zoned landfill, do you believe that you would put a landfill out there, if you were willing to pay three or four or five times the amount?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, you wouldn't overspend for a property, correct? So you can pretty much guarantee that if you're selling that property with a permit to do landfill, a landfill's going to go out there. I mean, you could probably deduce that, otherwise you wouldn't purchase the property. Unless you're perhaps Deseret that wants to buy the property. Which, oh, by the way, for public knowledge, they agreed in a settlement agreement, and while I won't speak for them, the reason why they're probably not here tonight is because, you know, litigation, several years, several million dollars of fighting with the county, they agreed to a settlement agreement to only do construction waste, because they were worried that they would lose it, and they'd be permitting all three out there. So that's probably why they're not here, because it probably wouldn't be beneficial to them, because they settled on allowing the county to do construction, so. Again, there's a lot of pieces and parts that, you know, unless you've been through the process, or unless you follow this as long as I have, long before I was even in office, I mean, my thing is, is that it's not going to, nothing will change in 60 days that, short of a catastrophic tornado going through the area, if we wait and hold off until we have all of the options in front of us, so we actually have a plan.
Ma'am, if I can ask a question. In order to keep all the options on the table, with the best information that I can bring to the board, I would need to talk to the city of Melbourne about the possibility of using, for example, the northeast property and the conditional use permit. So if we are going, if the board is going to go that route, I would like permission to talk to the city of Melbourne to explore that possibility, so I can come back to you and tell you, they are not opposing it, so you have that information at whatever time.
Correct. Because to this point, no commissioner has directed you to negotiate with anybody as far as with American Recyclers or anything like that, correct?
That's correct. The only, the only thing I've been told is to get an appraiser.
Is to get the information.
Appraisal.
Right. Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut in there, but you were on the subject, so I wanted to address it before it got lost in the next speaker. Commissioner Smith? Oh, county manager? You're not in my queue until after Smith and Pritchett.
That's okay.
I'm just kidding. Go ahead, I'm just giving you a hard time.
Thank you. There's a variety of factors. I don't want the board to not be fully apprised that, even if we get the appraisal, that is not going to help the board, from the county manager's perspective, make an informed decision relative to that property, for a variety of reasons. There are a variety of other factors that have to come into play. For example, there's issues related to the cost of the closure of that property, that the appraisal may or may not address. Cost of the liner, there's issues with mulch removal, and what the value of that would be, and the cost associated with doing that, which is something that Yuri has indicated is a significant issue for us. There's questions about stormwater improvements, and what would have to be done on the Find Area site, and in addition to the conditional use permit that would be required if we wanted to get additional height there. We also have unknown environmental contaminants, and we put that in the initial report that came out a couple of months ago. Those are all factors that I think the board is going to want to have information on, and we'd be happy to get staff starting to work on any of that, if that's what the board would like. Because if you're looking for a timely response, in terms of what you want to do, that appraisal and whatever of those factors that are addressed in the appraisal, the remaining factors are things that we're going to have to get answers to as well. So you make the best informed decision about the relative cost of that property, you know, and there was significant life potential there, but you've got to look at that compared to what the cost is. And the appraisal is only one component of what that potential cost is. So if you want us doing that, then, you know, we would appreciate direction from the board that you want us to be looking at all those factors and get us working on that, because that is going to be, I think, an extended period of time for us to get all that information together.
I figured you guys were working on that already.
No, the only, the only direction we had was to get the appraisal, so we haven't done those factors. We're happy to do it, if that's where the board wants to go, and from the dialogue I'm hearing, you know, that- And from the dialogue I'm hearing, you know, that is a potential option that you want to see fully examined. We'll need to do those other areas as well.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yuri, how long have we been working on this potential landfill, 192?
Since the eighties. The last time we restarted the project was in 2006.
And why has it taken so long, and why have we spent so much time on it?
The permitting process takes, for a brand-new landfill, it takes an average of around 10 years. We are beyond that average, and it's mainly been, the last thing it was, the Army Corps of Engineer. When you turn in the permit, the permit doesn't, they do not have a time limit on which to respond to it. There's been a series of factors, and also there's been several things that I have been looking at that have been steps. For example, there's no sense in getting an FAA permit. We got one, we let it expire because it was contingent upon the other stuff. We have done things in what I thought was an orderly process, even though it took a little bit more time, because we bought more time in Sarno.
And Florida recyclers is one possibility to extend us time, give us more time. But as Mr. Abate mentioned, there are an awful lot of hurdles for us to even consider that. And one namely is that there's a good chance that there are a lot of contaminants in there that we don't want to be responsible for if we bought it. Is that not correct?
When you're dealing with a landfill, you always have that possibility.
Right. Okay. And how much have we spent so far on these permits and the property itself?
$25 million.
Okay. And for the public to know, it's very, very difficult in Florida to come up with properties that will meet all the requirements to have a future landfill. Is that not correct?
That's correct. It has to be from a certain distance of drinkable water. It has to be from a certain distance of airports. In the case of Brevard County, we went a little bit further and tried to get it a certain distance away from subdivisions and that kind of stuff. And when you ended up, we ended up with two potential properties, which 192 was one. And this was before Viera was built. Deseret was, Viera was another.
So in your estimation, right now, and let's take Florida recyclers off the table, what kind of time do you think that we have on current landfills that we can use? When do you anticipate those being to the point where we have to shut them down and not put anymore?
You've got 30 years' worth of life on the Cocoa landfill. Hasn't been built, but it's there available in the expansion area. And you've got one additional year in Sarno. And if the height variance is granted, like I'm thinking it will be, you've got another three years for a total of four years in Sarno without horizontally expanding the Sarno landfill. In other words, without taking advantage of, for example, the northeast piece of property.
So Cocoa, are the permits already in place for Cocoa? That we would just have to make notice to someone?
The stormwater is in place. The permits are in place for Cell 1. The permits for Cell 2, 3, 4, and 5 are relatively easy to get because the facility is already a pre-existing facility.
Okay. So we have that as an alternative. So that's maybe 30 years out before we would even need this landfill?
Different types of landfill, sir.
Okay.
Cocoa is garbage.
Right.
And Class 1. Class 1, you can put Class 1 material as well as Class 3 material. Class 1 is a more expensive landfill because the protection to the environment is more. For example, what we call a liner or a single composite liner for a Class 3 is a double composite liner for a Class 1. So the construction expenses are much more higher than for a Class 3, because you're talking about garbage versus you're talking about on the other one, construction and demolition, which doesn't rot as easily and doesn't contaminate the groundwater.
Let me add one issue to that. Using the Cocoa landfill, which is a Class 1, if you could add 20 years of material that's currently going to Sarno, you could take care of that for 20 years by sending it to Cocoa. When you do that, you reduce by 10 years that 30-year life to 20 years on a Class 1. The cost of that is estimated to be about $62 million. That is a very significant consideration in terms of what you're doing there. And that's one of the pieces of information. Like I said, there's different costs, whether it's Florida recycling, whether it's, if we were dealing with the northeast corner, which is, I call, the fine area, because they're leasing it currently. They're all going to have different costs associated with it, as would, of course, the 192 site. And then the board's going to have to make that determination on a policy basis and a cost basis, whatever the board thinks is appropriate. The staff will be ready to, you know, to follow through and make sure we proceed with whatever direction you choose to give us.
And how many millions to get the 192 site up?
There's, to do the 192 site would be about $66 million, and it would last for 60 years. So it's a different, you know, lifespan compared to the other sites.
And if that's the case, I don't even know why we're looking at alternative energy if we believe that we're going to need landfills 60 years from now. That's disgusting and shameful. But anyway.
Yuri, if we didn't go forward with the purchase of this permit and have that in reserve that we could go to, and that's what we're talking about. This is like an insurance policy for us going forward, because trash and garbage and yard waste, it's a fact of life. And this county's growing, so what we've collected in the past is going to increase exponentially as we continue to grow. And if we have the possibility of a 60-year landfill, by then, hopefully, technology will move forward, and we may not even need a landfill at that point in time. But given that it's so hard to get these permits, it's incumbent upon a commission, whether it be this one or the one 20 years from now, to make a decision on this landfill. My premise is that if we secure this landfill, and we don't need it for 10 or 15 or 20 years, we've still got that ace in the hole. If we sell it now, we're selling out the people that will be the commissioners in 15 or 20 years. They're not going to have the option of using this as a landfill, because an earlier commission, this one presumably, could actually sell that property. What if we sold that property and we don't have that fallback? Has there been a study done on what it would cost us? Because at that point, if we were to sell it, and 20 years from now, we don't have any other options, we're going to have to truck this garbage out of the county. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir. If we were not to have any space in which to put it, we would have to truck it out.
And have any estimates been done on what that cost would be?
Yes. We pretty much estimated it at around $100 million.
Over how long?
I believe a 25-year period of time.
Okay. So from my perspective, if we don't move forward on this, and we don't allow this to become our ace in the hole, from my point of view, my opinion is that we would be forcing the county into a position that I don't think we want to be in. And that would be that we have no future landfill here, and we're going to have, we would be at the mercy of any other county that we would be able to truck it to. And I would presume that would be, Osceola would be the first choice at this point in time?
Based on the price and the distance, yes, sir.
Okay. So, but right now, with us having this, we're in control for the next 60 years. If we don't do this as soon as 20 years, I'm guessing from what we've been saying, we could be paying $100 million over the next 25 years beyond that, to truck it somewhere else.
When the board doesn't have a place to put the debris in that it controls, the board loses the ability to control the price.
Right.
In other words, and the price gets paid by the taxpayers.
So if we own it, we control the future price, and we don't have to face $100 million worth of transportation?
You have a better control. I'll give you an example. Yard waste mulch, I was shipping it out over to Willabretta over in Polk County at $8.75 a ton, and we charged $23 a ton, plus another $15. So we were pretty much breaking even. Polk County or Willabretta closed down, it got sold, the new owners are closing it, or closed it. The new bid came out at $19.97. So right now, I am losing money for every ton of yard waste that comes in. And it was, according to the market, I don't know if it was because somebody took advantage that Polk County, or Willabretta was closing it, and the market will stabilize later on, and some other people will come in to compete. But the fact of the matter is that we have no control over that price, and we need to get rid of the mulch. Same thing with the tires. The tires went up. I think around a 40% increase.
How far off of 192 is the projected site for the landfill itself?
About 3/4 of a mile inside of the property.
So 30 or 40 years from now, we might have a 20-foot hill that's 3/4 of a mile off of 192?
Probability, and it boils down to hurricanes and also population explosions.
Right. But the key here is we're still in control if we own this property.
I am of the hope that eventually we will find the technology in which we can recycle a lot more than what we do at a reasonable cost.
But at this point, that's a hope. But it's a realistic hope, because we've seen tremendous...
Every so often, we go out there and check the market, and that's what we're currently doing right now. Up to now, it hasn't been, and we have, there's a reason why we are one of the cheapest disposal rates around, and that is it. We've had these rates from 1991, I believe, the 23.66 per ton for CND.
Yeah.
The assessments, except for collection. The solid waste assessment actually, right now, is lower than what it was in 1991, by about $4 per residential home. And it's because the board controls that by controlling the department.
Right. And it's because we have our own landfill, and we control that because of that.
Yes, sir. The capital investment has been made already.
Right. Okay.
Now, I'm talking about old, old capital investments.
Well, I, thank you, Yuri. I don't see any reason that we shouldn't go forward with this. I think if we wait another two weeks, two months, two years, it's inevitable that this is, from my perspective, the right way to go. I know that you have a lot of heartburn about this, but I don't see it being any different two months from now. So I would support Commissioner Tobias's desire to move forward on this now.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yuri, I'm sorry. I got sidetracked on what you're talking about. We have a place in Cocoa that's just being permitted now that we're not actively using?
No, it's the current, it's the current landfill in Cocoa.
The Addison.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Just a couple of things. Here's where I'm at right now. I think...
Yuri, 2715, Georgia, Fred Jameson, by Melton.
Cherry, Cherry jumped in and told me where I was at right now. It's a new watch.
She said, "Here's where I'm at."
Jameson Road. Is, okay, I hear the commissioner of this district requested 30 to 60 days. I think out of respect, we need to do that, because it's not going to hurt anything right now to do that. And she would be more comfortable trying to gather a little bit more information. Now, something that I heard, outside of this appraisal, we still have a plan where we could potentially add on seven years to the Sarno road with the height. So we do have a little bit of extra time to figure this out. So I don't think 30 to 60 days is going to make enough difference. And let me, I get all this, and that's why I'm saying I'm not up for selling this property. I think we need to hold on to the property, because Commissioner Smith, I agree with you, we could end up in a dire situation, and I don't want to go through this rodeo again, you know, since it's farm property, it's an appropriate term, that we make smart decisions. But I've got to throw this out. District 1 has three landfills. District 5 has one, and this will be two. District 2, 3, and 4 has zero. So we've got to pay attention to this, because it's directly affecting our districts. I mean, we've got to really watch over this. So I think, and just do caution, I think she's earned the 30 or 60 days here, seeing I don't think it's going to affect us a whole lot right now. We could come back and have this discussion if we don't, and if we do permit. Commissioner Tobias, something else with that? We can still permit it, not spend anything, sir. So I don't think at that point it's going to be a problem, but it's going to give our commissioner of this district a little bit of time to get some comfort and to think through the process. It's a big decision. So I think that's going to, would be the appropriate thing, and I would hope that we move to bring this back in 30 to 60 days and have this discussion, whereas I would probably be okay with permitting, but I'm not going to do that without the county always coming back with anything we're doing outside of permitting past that point, that that will be a discussion again at that point.
Commissioner Lober?
First, I just want to kind of point out that this sort of follows my pattern with anything that involves a property matter within someone's district. I try to give a disproportionate level of leeway to the commissioner in whose district the project falls. Now, that said, this isn't something like changing a zoning classification, where truly it would only affect that one area. It is something that affects the county as a whole. I do agree, though, that there's no harm, based on everything I've heard, in waiting a couple of months. So consequently, I'd move to continue this out for discussion at the first regular meeting in September, whatever that might be.
My second?
Okay. Did we have a motion before? Did you make a motion, Commissioner Tobias, when you spoke, or no?
No.
Okay.
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Lober, a second by Commissioner Pritchett. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a question for Yuri. Help me here. I believe we sat in these chairs, what, 45, 60 days ago, and we made the exact same motion to delay this 30 or 60 days. Am I correct? And that's what happened?
The motion, or the direction was in April.
Yeah, in April. In April, we said we are going to give Florida Recycles, Florida recyclers, more time. There was a vote, 4 to 1, and not to move forward with the permit. Is that, is that correct?
Two different subjects, sir.
Okay.
In January, the board told us to go for an appraisal on Florida recyclers. When we came along in April, we finally got the Army Corps of Engineer permit, and at that point in time, the board told us to hold off on the signature of the Army Corps of Engineer permit, which is what we did. We were still proceeding with the appraiser.
So to be clear, this motion has come to us previously to hold off on a permit for 30 to 60 days. We are just potentially voting to extend it another 30 to 60 days. Is that fair?
That would be my understanding, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to be against this one. That was a rhetorical question, and I knew, I knew, I knew the vote was 4 to 1. I'm glad to hear Commissioner Smith is on board with moving forward for the taxpayers' benefit. My question would be to Mr. Abate. If we were to go forward with evaluating this holistically, looking at the environmental impacts, I'm, Florida Recycles, Florida recyclers have, you know, from their lack of turning over data, have not been a good partner on this. My question is, could you do, or could we make that evaluation without going on that property?
No. To do the environmental assessment, we would need the cooperation of Florida recyclers.
So...
Because I think that's all reportable to FDEP, depending whatever the results were. So they would have to be cooperating with us in that regard.
So, and since Florida Recycles have not cooperated in a timely manner, and since we're not moving forward on this, I'm, I think we would be, can you, can you help me here, that we have any guarantee that we would ever get, you know, cooperation from Florida recyclers when it, when it comes to that?
I, like Yuri, would not be in a position to judge what they would or would not do. We're just trying to tell you what we would need to get in order to give you what I believe is the due diligence that would be needed to help you make the best decision on whether that, you know, property should be purchased. And I would say that environmental assessment is a critically important part, so we would hope to be able to move forward on that if that's what the board wants, so we can give you that information. And there's other components that I mentioned, too, that I think, you know, for the first time, that we're talking about. The whole issue of the type of closure that would be required if we bought... The whole issue of the type of closure that would be required if we bought the property is different than the type of closure that would be needed if they were doing it themselves. What's an escrow, a whole bunch of other factors come into consideration. And those would all be things that I would think the board would want us to be getting information on.
If, thank you, Mr. Abate. If, and this might be to Yuri, if Florida recyclers was a good partner and allowed us on the property in a timely fashion in order to conduct that type of study, which would give us the environmental as well as the, you know, the closure and all that good nonsense, how long would that process take? Or would we see ourselves back here in 60 days asking for more time?
According to the appraiser, you're looking at, the appraisal part of it would probably be coming out at the end of the month or the beginning of the following month.
But Frank has said that that is not the whole picture.
No, that is not the whole picture. We have done this in steps because if the board is not comfortable with the appraiser or the cost of it, there's no sense in spending money on an environmental study. So what we're trying, what we have been doing is we got permission to go out for an appraisal, not for an environmental. And until the board judges that the price is correct, there's no sense in going out to the next step and spending that money.
I did not understand it. Thank you for making that clear. Assuming we decided to go forward, how long, if they came back, you know, in 30 days or whatever, how long would it take to do that?
Environmental site assessments in this case would be pretty extensive, what's referred to as a Phase 2. And they can be lengthy and difficult to say what it would be. I can't, I wouldn't guess that it would be anything less than 60 days from the time you had the consultants onboard doing the test, getting the test results, and then going back and doing, and they almost always result in additional tests. And so you have to do it, you know, another round typically and then ultimately a report that has to be produced. So probably 60 days. I don't, I wouldn't hazard a guess on the cost.
So in fairness, it would be 30 days potentially for the appraisal and then if the board decided to move forward, an additional 60 days on top of that. So we're looking at best-case scenario to get a holistic idea of this, three months. Is that, is that fair to make an accurate decision on what the impact of repairs would be?
You're looking at, plus the hiring of the consultants, we would have to check to see if any of our consultants onboard could do it. If they could do it, then it would be a lot faster. If not, we would have to go out for an RFP for a consulting firm.
Which would take at a minimum, you know, with the RFP, another, what, 45 days, 30 and then 15?
About 45 days. I don't think it could be done in 30 days.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, in deference to our esteemed chair, who I have a great deal of respect for, I agreed back in April, I guess it was, to extend it to this meeting. But nothing's really changed in that 60 days and I don't anticipate anything changing again. So I would still support moving forward with this and because nothing's going to happen overnight. If we get this Army Corps of Engineers permit signed and we go forward, all that does is guarantee that these folks and their progeny are not going to be faced with $100 million of transport fees to get rid of trash in the next 10 to 20 years. So I don't, I don't see any reason to put it off. So I will support, if Mr. Tobias, Commissioner Tobias, would like to make a motion, I'll second it.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Let me just throw out this idea.
Okay, I'm listening.
Well, we've been doing this for 40 years, 13 years. This is not going to be a fast process anyways. I'm not sure 30, 60 to 90 days is going to hurt to just give her... You can't hear it?
I think you just got to talk closer.
Okay.
New equipment guide.
Weren't you glad I don't yell? Okay, so I, I'm not sure that'll make a big difference. And here's the thing, even if we don't go with Florida recycling, you know, whatever, we're still going to get seven years hopefully off of the landfill. So I think we've got some time anyways. Again, not that this might not be the move, but I think that we have a commissioner asking for this time for some comfort. Here's something too, and even if we do it, I, okay, let's say the property's valued more, you know, it might be recognized, but it's not realized. It won't make any difference to us whether it's worth a billion dollars or a thousand. We're, you know, a government entity. We don't pay taxes on it and until the time we sell it, that doesn't mean a hill of garbage. Okay, so I don't, I don't know why it would hurt just to wait as the commissioner's asking, given her a couple of months. I just think it's appropriate and in the scheme of it, of how long this is taking, still going to take, I think it's just a drop in the bucket, so.
Commissioner Lober?
I just want to go, just want to go ahead and call the question at this point.
Well, and as the chair, I'm going to say, "Hold on one second," only because I was trying to not interrupt, but you know, it's so hard.
As I said, I'm not calling a question at the moment.
Okay, well, I just want to say that, and staff, you can nod your head yes or no or reply if you like. I mean, I'm not going to use you to try to get my point or to score points with the public or in the press. What I'm going to say to you or what I'm going to at least acknowledge is a few months isn't going to matter, given where we are now. I think the best decision's not just for this board, but for taxpayers, is to make the best decisions with the most amount of information. It doesn't change anything. The county doesn't lose a penny. I mean, at least that we can guess that the county's not going to lose any, any money per se on the property waiting a few months. If anything, we'd probably gain it because property values are going up as we speak. So unless everybody's okay with us, you know, cutting driveways and getting one step closer to that landfill, I mean, I think we're crazy not to do it with the most amount of information. And American recyclers may not be the end-all, be-all. But I wish I would have known that there were hurdles before because maybe at least I could have been more aggressive or more, say, you know, with American recyclers. I think we're, we're kind of bad-mouthing them too and I haven't heard their side of the story. And I'm not saying that you are bad-mouthing them. I'm not saying they haven't been responsive, but they don't look like government entities. They're, they're old Florida family that's owned this business for a while. So I'm sure that they don't know all the rules either and know what's public on their financial information. I'd be hesitant too, dealing with a big government. So rather than throw them to the wolves and say they've been rotten, rotten partners, I at least want to give them the opportunity to give us the information so we're making the best informed decisions up here. And I think that that is not just our duty as elected officials, but our duty as stewards and good financial stewards, so. Okay, so I'm going to call the question now. So the motion was, do you want to repeat it?
Sure. The motion was to continue this out to the first regular meeting of September.
Commissioner Pritchett? Second by Commissioner Pritchett. And since I called the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 3-2.
Thought I had them.
Everybody okay or anybody need a break?
Might take a few minutes.
Take a few minutes before we move on to the next.
Yeah, please.
Come back in five, seven-ish minutes.